This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the November 16th, 2022 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have four commissioners present this evening and we do have one vacancy on the Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Good evening. The hybrid meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor, for non-agenda items, will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session on November 9th and also prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, this is an opportunity for any members of the public to make a comment on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone here, virtually or in person, who'd like to address the board? It's her in the blue shirt. If you'd come up to the microphone and please give us your name and address.
My name is...
Is the microphone on? I'm so sorry. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Stephen Worley. I live on, in McCongee 205 Rounding Circle. Thanks for recognizing me. I am the chairperson of the Lehigh County Libertarian Party. I am a former Army Ranger. I am an entrepreneur, have owned up to four businesses, and there is a matter that one of my candidates is going to bring up to you, and I urge that this board takes it very seriously. In the military, especially being a Ranger, we pride ourselves on being quiet professionals. If this board does not take this seriously, I urge that there will be some professional means taken against it. I think most of you probably already know what is going to come up. If you don't, you will learn. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir, please come up to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Matt Shutter. I live at 4346 Shallow Drive, and I was the Libertarian candidate for the 132nd Legislative District. For those who do not know, the state rep candidate. On Tuesday, about 10 o'clock, the South Whitehall Police were called at the 5th District, South Whitehall 5th District polling place, at Calvary Baptist Church, because Tim Banyo, the Lehigh County Elections Director, did not like me pointing out that handicapped people could not vote independently. This has to stop. Your officers should not ever go to a polling place, ever, unless there's an emergency. That's what the election code says. Mr. Banyo has three felony charges on him. I spoke to your police this morning. I gave, I gave my complaint. Is this, how would you like, you all were one of us who got elected? How would you like to be out campaigning and have the police called on you? Now, your chances of being elected is higher than ourselves. Now, I'm not here to debate that. I'm realistic. I'm a Libertarian. We normally don't win. But that doesn't mean that the county, I can't say your police, your police was professional. This cannot happen again. Please change the policy, and we can move forward. I'm willing to work with you all to change the policy. I'm willing to give my phone number to you all, anybody that needs it. But this will not be tolerated ever again. Lehigh County is getting sued. I don't want to see my township get sued. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments.
President Kelly?
Yes.
May I address Mr. Shutter? Shutter, would you, Mr. Shutter?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes, yes.
So I listen intently. I myself vote as a resident in District 6. So can you share with me, though, and I can tell you, in the polling place for District 6, there was a separate station right there as you enter, you know, Calvary Temple on the right-hand side, for those with disabilities. So can you share with me what you're talking about?
Yes, that's, I, thank you for, for pointing that out. I wasn't very clear on that.
No, no problem.
Thank you. For the wheelchair person or an elderly person to go in to vote, well, with the wheelchair, the wheelchairs are too big to fit into the doors.
You're talking about the entrance?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
When I was judge, what I did is had them wide open, that there was no problems. And because of politics, I, I got a big mouth, and I stand for the voters' rights. Okay? Because of politics, and I believe Tim's personal feelings, wanted to interfere in this. That's fine. I'm a political candidate, like you all are. You better have thick skin to play politics. But when you come out to the polling place, that's a different game.
So are you saying that the entranceway, which is the same for those three districts in that particular?
Yeah. Calvary Temple, the judge at Calvary Temple, yeah, his door is wide open. That's the proper thing to do, to go in to vote, that people can, people can independently vote. It's against the American Disabilities Act, and there's laws. Yes, an anarchist is talking about the law.
Mr. Osborne, just as a clarification, I believe that the polling place that Matt Shutter is talking about is the 5th District?
Shutter, ma'am.
Uh, Shutter, sorry. Calvary Baptist, not?
Oh, on Tillman Street. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
I wrote down Calvary Baptist.
Yeah, because, okay.
The 5th District.
Okay. I, I thought the one I'm talking about on Winchester is 678.
I was familiar.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's why I was a little confused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Of course, no problem. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the board during courtesy of the floor? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will proceed on to Agenda Item 5, which are our meeting minutes from the November 2nd, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. They have been distributed to the board members. Are there any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to presentations, we have our second reading of the proposed 2023 budget. I will ask our Director of Finance, Tricia Dickert, please review with us.
Good evening, Commissioners. So tonight, we will go over the forecasted proposed 2023 budget numbers a second time. I'll go over each fund, naming the page if you want to turn to that in your budget books, that's fine. And then maybe this time, we'll just wait until the end, and if you guys have any questions for me on any of the funds that we've gone over several times now, I'll do my best to answer. Things get a little foggy after a little while. So, again, we'll start with the General Fund on page 25, with forecasted revenues of $17,825,146, and forecasted expenses of $17,74280, which leaves us with a surplus of $84,866, which would get added to the fund balance. For the FIRE Fund on page 48, we are looking at forecasted revenues of $1,135,000 and forecasted expenses of $870,000. That leaves us with a surplus of $265,000 that will be distributed in the following way. $200,000 of that will go to the FIRE Apparatus Fund. $50,000 will go to FIRE's fiscal stability, and $15,000 will go to fiscal stability as well to pay back a $63,000 poll from there in 2022. The Water Fund on page 56 is forecasted revenues of $4,831,250, expenses 4,000, I'm sorry, 4,000, $4,082,592, which leaves us with a surplus to add to the fund balance of approximately $748,658. On page 63, the Sewer Fund, we're forecasting revenues at $3,915,858, and expenses at $3,802,464, which leaves us with $113,394 to add to the fund balance. For Refuse on page 70, we're forecasting revenues of $2,941,126, and expenses of $3,021,714. That puts us at a deficit of $80,588, which would be covered by the fund balance. On page 75, we reviewed capital requests totaling $1,009,16787, which would come from the projected cash carryforward at the end of 2022. On page 80, for the Open Space Fund, we're projecting revenues totaling $144,0614, and capital expense usage of $128,000. That leaves us with a surplus of $16,0614, which will just remain in that fund's balance. For State Highway Aid on page 84, we're looking at revenues in the amount of $713,919, and expenses totaling $772,000. That leaves us with a deficit of $58,081, which will be covered by the fund balance. The Use of ARPA Funds on page 94, currently, that balance, the unappropriated balance, is approximately $1,674,801, and we're requesting a capital use from those funds for the police department body and in-car cameras for approximately $635,993, of which Chief Dorni has submitted a grant. Lastly, on page 95, for the Debt Service Fund, the unappropriated balance there is $289,287, and we're looking to use $287,000 of that for capital purposes to put in sidewalks for the South Whitehall Township campus. Those are the numbers, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Tricia. I'll open up to any comments or questions from the board at this time. There are none. Thank you very much for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Agenda Item 7, Ordinances. We have a motion to adopt said ordinance, an ordinance reenacting, amending, and restating Chapter 144, Article 3, FIRE Code of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township in its entirety, and adopting the 2018 edition of the International FIRE Code with local amendments, providing that state law controls where requirements are in excess of this ordinance, and providing for a repealer, continuation, and saving clause, severability clause, and effective date. I'd like to ask our Township Fire Marshal and Building Code Officer, John France, to please present this item.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
What we, what I have before you tonight is a memorandum and hopefully approval of the ordinance to adopt the 2018 International FIRE Code. I will be more brief than my memo, however, at the end, if you have any additional questions you may ask of me, and I will do my best to answer. This will move us from the 2015 International FIRE Code, which is what is currently adopted, to the 2018 International FIRE Code, which the 2018 code year is consistent with the construction ordinances and codes in effect in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It contains changes from the past that we have carried forward with only changes in, perhaps, section numbers, and also has the information that has changed the open burning provisions of the FIRE Code. entertain any questions at this point, if you have any?
Thank you, John. Are there any comments or questions from the board on this? Are there any public comment at this time? Okay, hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? I'll second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for your, for your work on this, and Attorney Zader, for attorney, all the first work on this as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Zader. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item B, we have a motion to proceed with advertising of said ordinance, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 17, Boards, Commissions, Councils, and Departments, Article 5, Commission Meetings of the Codified Ordinances of South Whitehall Township, to designate the meeting location and time for regular meetings of the Board of Commissioners, and providing for a repealer clause, severability clause, and effective date. I'd like to ask our Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to please present.
Thank you. The draft ordinance essentially just confirms the, the meeting dates and times to make sure that our code is consistent with how, how you currently meet, which is the first and third Wednesdays of the month at 7:00 PM at the municipal building. So the First Class Township Code actually states that the Board of Commissioners shall meet at least once a month, and you have to designate the time and place by ordinance. And of course, with the Sunshine Act, you have to also then advertise as well. But this just gets you consistent with this, with the First Class Township Code. So I'd seek a motion to advertise the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Tom. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item C, we have a motion to proceed with advertising of said ordinance, an ordinance of the Township of South Whitehall, County of Lehigh, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the property tax rate for the fiscal year 2023. And Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, this one is for you as well.
Thank you. So 1709A of the First Class Township Code requires the Board of Commissioners to fix the property rate for real, for, for real property taxes for the next fiscal year in conduct, in conjunction with the approval of your, of your annual budget. Right now, the, the tax rate for 2023 is proposed to remain the same. So no tax rate increases for property taxes are required in order to complete the budget that was read into the record by Finance Director Dickert earlier this, this meeting. So right now, the, the property tax rate for general township purposes is 2.849750 mils, and the tax rate for fire tax purposes is .47 mils. So the ordinance basically expresses those, those figures in numerical form, as well as it requires you to write it out per each $100 of assessed valuation. So we are following the First Class Township Code for that. So I'm seeking a motion to advertise.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Any board discussion on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? I'll make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to Agenda Item D, we have a, for discussion, followed by motion to proceed with advertising of said ordinance, and motion to send to LVPC an ordinance amending the South Whitehall Township zoning ordinance by deleting Section 350-48N2, No-Impact Home-Based Business, creating new sections 350-48H5, Home-Based Business, No-Impact, and 350-48H4, Home-Based Business, Low-Impact, renumbering existing Section 350-48N3, Nursing Home to Section 350-48N2, renumbering existing sections 350-48H4 through H6 to 350-48H6 through H8, to accommodate the new sections 350-48H4 and H5, correct all impacted links within the zoning ordinance, and providing for a severability clause, retention of rights-to-enforce clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. And I believe our Director of, no, is it Greg tonight? I'm sorry, my agenda says it's Dave. I apologize. So Greg Adams, our planner, if you'd please present this item for us.
Thank you. Yes, this is the low, No-Impact, Low-Impact Home-Based Business. Last year, this was before the Planning Commission three times. The third time, they recommended it for approval. It returned to the Board of Commissioners at their September 15th, 2021 meeting, at which point there were comments, and it was tabled. It came back last month, October 19th meeting, and at, toward the end of the presentation, Attorney Zader had, as he said, an epiphany. So he decided that it might be good to put this on hold. The, the ordinance was tabled, and he sorted through his thoughts, and basically, the issue that came out of it was, there was a section under the No-Impact Home-Based Business that stated, "Termination of residence by the owner who establishes the No-Impact Home-Based Business shall be automatic, shall automatically terminate the No-Impact Home-Based Business at that residence." Attorney Zader thought that as zoning special exceptions, as with variances, run with the land, there really isn't legal support for terminating a special exception approval. It, it should run with the land as well. So the safe bet would be to simply remove that, so that if anyone goes into the zoning hearing board and gets a special exception, then sells their property, the next person, or even subsequent owner of the property, can operate that home-based business so long as they comply exactly with the conditions of approval that the zoning hearing board placed on it. So it would have to be the same type of business operating under exactly the same conditions as the original was. That's, that's a pretty, pretty safe bet from our, our point of view. If there are any changes that the new owner would like to make, that would have to go back to the zoning hearing board for another review and special exception approval. So we felt that was pretty safe. The safest thing was to be, simply remove that from that section, and we would continue on as previously. So that's the only change that has been made since last month. Otherwise, both amendments, the No-Impact Home-Based Business and the Low-Impact Home-Based Business are otherwise identical. So that's where we're at this point. If you have any questions, I'm, be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Greg. I'll open it up to the Commissioners for any questions. Mr. Hodges?
I do have a quick question. I just wanted to clarify. If someone has a home-based business, that residence is zoned for that business. If that person moves and sells, that home remains zoned for that business? Is that correct?
Not so much.
Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, that is. Basically speaking, what they've done is, is gotten a special exception only for that property that allows them to operate that home-based business in the manner that they testified to before the zoning hearing board, and is then memorialized in the decision and order by the zoning hearing board. So it must continue exactly as originally granted.
Commissioner Hodges, maybe just to put an example in place that might bring home for you. If there's a restaurant operating somewhere in the township that has obtained zoning relief, and that restaurant owner sells to somebody else, that's allowed to continue without that new owner having to get the zoning relief that the first owner had gotten. That's really what we're talking about here. If, if someone moves out of their home, having operated a home-based, home-based business, and the same home-based business goes in with the next homeowner and meets all the requirements that were established at the zoning hearing, then that can continue.
So they would not have to go to zoning hearing board again? It would just automatically continue, and they could just start up right away?
As long as it's the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
I have a follow-up, similar question, practically speaking. How will the township track that, and how would the homeowner who might be buying this property that had a previously approved home-based business, how is that going to procedurally work so that the township would be aware of it, the new homeowner would be aware of it, and who will be responsible to assure that the specific parameters that the zoning hearing board granted for that first allowance is going to be carried to the second? Will it be a new hearing?
There would not be a new hearing unless there's a violation that takes it to the zoning hearing board, and that would be an administrative matter for the staff to address. So I think Greg or Dave are better equipped to answer the question than I am.
Yeah, we, we maintain a property file for essentially every property in the township. So there would simply be a marker placed in that property file of whatever zoning hearing board decision and order would be relevant to that property, so that in the future, if somebody wanted to continue that, we would simply go to that address in the property file, and it would be there.
So I guess I'm just a little confused, because the parameters that were put are on that first business, the likelihood of having almost an exact business come in, how will we, as a township, protect that zoning that was permitted and approved for the first business, to then assure that the second one is operating in those same standards so that the neighbors who might have had concerns, and that was addressed at zoning, how do we assure that that is being maintained once the property has a new owner?
Generally speaking, if somebody comes in and wants to do a home-based business, obviously, they'll need a business privilege license to operate there. So they would contact the township. The zoning officer would review that application as part of the process, do the research, pull up the decision and order. She could even attach that to the BP license to go to the new, new property owner, let them know, these are the conditions under which you're, you're operating. If a neighbor has a complaint, then obviously, we would have that decision and order on record. We would do an investigation to check to see if the current property owner is adhering to all of the requirements of that decision and order. If they are, then they're operating under the law. If they aren't, they would be in violation of the zoning ordinance because they're in violation of that decision and order. We would then go through the, the normal procedure for, you know, dealing with a, a violation of the zoning ordinance.
One more question. So if we approved a piano teacher, and then, does it need to be another piano teacher, or is there latitude and room for it to be other similar home-based businesses, or would something that deviates from a piano teacher have to come back through zoning and start a fresh application?
I think that would depend on the decision and order. If the zoning here- If the zoning hearing board specifies that it has to be a piano teacher, then that would be what's in the decision and order. If it's more, if they're more broad about that, if it's a music instructor or something like that, then that's what we would have to follow.
If, if I could just jump in real quick, the other piece of this and part of the reason that we're bringing this forward is the enforcement end of it. So right now, home-based business, we have our ordinance, but having specific conditions is very helpful so that the neighbors and the owner are all on the same page and we can pull up that decision and say, this is what you have to do. So if a new business comes in and they inquire with the township, what can I do? We have that order to share with them. If they need to make a change, we send them back to the zoning hearing board.
Thank you, Dave.
No, go ahead. Just, just to piggyback on that, Greg, a little bit, the, if a, if a property is deemed a home-based business for whatever, say music, okay, and they decide to sell, would, the burden then would be on the seller, and this is more of a question, to the, to the potential buyer to say, oh, I've got a home-based business. Specifically, I've got a home-based business for music. Because a buyer could say, oh, I got a home-based business here, it's already been approved, zoning in South Whitehall Township approved it, but I'm not going to be music, they're not thinking, they're, they're going to do something else. So where's the burden for the seller to, to tell the buyer specifically what that home-based business is?
From our point of view, there is no burden. We are not requiring the seller to inform any subsequent buyers of that. That's something that they can choose to do or not choose to do. Certainly, we would have the decision and order on record here, so any potential homebuyer could come in and ask the township, are there any variances? Are there any approvals that go with this property? We would share them, of course. So if they're doing their due diligence during the purchasing and approached the township, that's when the potential buyer would learn that.
I, I hear, I agree with you and what you're saying in the process. I would hate down the road for a buyer to come back and say, I was misled by this. Now, again, that's not a township issue, the due diligence is on responsibility for the buyer. But I would hate to have the, the buyer come back and think that there's an issue with the seller and misrepresentation.
Indeed, indeed. But unfortunately, anybody who gains a variance in this, this or any other township is operating under the same problem. If, if the, if the seller doesn't disclose, then the buyer is unaware.
And Commissioner Kelly, I would note that while I'm not sure how often it happens in South Whitehall zoning proceedings, certainly across Pennsylvania, it's not at all uncommon for some applicant to come in and say, here's what the guy who sold the house to me told me, here's what I understood, here's what they said the township had told them. That comes up a lot.
And I think the good thing about having it, everything memorialized in a decision is we have those, that packet of information. So that is explicitly, you know, a seller could hand them this piece of paper that says, this is the decision, these are the conditions. So it kind of simplifies that process.
Yeah, there's, there's no hearsay to that. It's, it's written, spelled out.
Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So this particular agenda line calls for two separate motions. So I don't want to assume, I know the answer, so I'll ask the question. One of the motions is to send this ordinance to LVPC. Is this just to inform them or is this to get their feedback review and feedback?
Feedback. We are required, any zoning ordinance amendment requires a 30-day review by the LVPC. They may comment, they may not, they may comment after one day, but we are obligated to wait the full 30. So this is a comment and usually they do give response.
I didn't want to assume the answer, but I needed to ask.
Absolutely.
So that brings up my second question. Would it be more appropriate to separate these two, not move to advertise something that we may get feedback on and perhaps consider a change to? Just a question.
And that's certainly up to you.
I'll ask our township manager if you have any guidance on that question.
I would indicate that because if you change one word of this ordinance, so if the LVPC brings up something, something substantive, if you change one word of this ordinance, it needs to go back to them. So I would recommend that it would be a good course of action to send it to them for their review and comment and hold off on advertising until you get those comments back.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for bringing up that point. And I have one other comment. I had the same comment at our last review of this document and it was on page six, item I, which has to do with any vehicles determined by the zoning hearing board that might have a logo on them that may be inconsistent with the appearance of a residential use. I'm still thinking about that particular line and a vehicle that might just have a small logo on a side, this particular possibility that you'd have to either have a garage or screen your vehicle. Is there a way that we can not make it a stringent, I guess, depending on where the property is and who might see a logo on a vehicle, if it's a more rural setting as opposed to a more densely populated apartment or townhome? I'm just struggling a little bit with this one.
And then that's, that's the thing, it's the, at the discretion of the zoning hearing board and they do tend to take in all of those issues. That's, that's why you have a special exception. It's, every application is taken in context. So they do take that into account, for example, as, as you, you know, opined, if this were a townhouse development, very little, no garage, little parking, neighbors all around, no way to screen, and the neighbors come out because they will be notified of this for the hearing, the neighbors come out and complain that the logo is too big, then obviously I think the zoning hearing board would listen to that and take that into account. However, if you're, you know, north of Huckabee Ridge, living on 15 acres and nobody, none of the neighbors come out, I, I think the zoning hearing board would view that very differently. And that, that's it. It's, it's very hard to write in something like that. You, you kind of have to leave it to the discretion of the board and, and let them exercise their best judgment.
And thank you, Greg. Just as a follow-up to the townhome scenario, if, if the neighbors were to complain and zoning denied a particular business because of that, does the homeowner who wants to open a business have any other recourse with the township if they're denied?
Well, not sure you can deny it. A special exception is a permitted use. It's only a case of they can attach reasonable conditions to it.
But that same townhouse, if they don't have a garage and they're not able to screen, that would make it impossible to have a vehicle at your house?
And that could be, yes.
Okay, so it's more a zoning?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's, it would be a denial, they could, I guess in theory, create a, a number of conditions that while reasonable are difficult if not impossible to fill.
Thank you.
Any other board discussion? Any from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to proceed with sending this ordinance, proposed ordinance to the LVPC for review?
So moved.
Motion is second, all on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Moving on to resolutions, item A, we have a resolution amending resolution 2020-18, which granted conditional preliminary final approval to a major subdivision plan entitled KRE Springview Commercial 2, extending conditional of approval of further blank days. Greg Adams, our planner, if you'd please present this item for us.
Yes, thank you. Six weeks ago, Carrie 2 was before you requesting a further extension of the approval of their project. 45-day extension was granted at that time. The expiration date is now November 19th, only three days away. So they are now back this evening to give you an update and as I understand, they may be asking for another extension. So they are here to present. I do want to point out that the, the resolution in your packets is blank, where it says number of days in extension and expiration date is blank. So if you are willing to do that, we would need you to determine the number of days that you were going to extend, extend it to. The other thing we would need to do is before you approve it, have the applicant sign the acceptance of conditions. Okay, very good. So those are the two items to take into account before you actually vote on this, if it comes to that.
Very good, thank you, Greg.
Further?
The floor is yours. Just make sure the microphone is on, a little green light.
Cool.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thanks President Kelly and the rest of the board. If we do, if we ask for an extension, it's going to be on with a very specific condition. So we have our professionals here tonight. Sorry, I should have started by saying I apologize for last time not being here. I agreed to the meeting like a month or two out, not realizing it was Yom Kippur. So then I, so thank you for granting that 45-day extension. The, the last substantive thing that we did was we brought back a plan and some drone shots and Chief Dorney's accident report to the Public Safety Commission. That did not result in them changing their recommendation to this board. And so we have our professionals here tonight if you would like to see that. Alternatively, if the board is inclined, because the condition there is so specific to the Public Safety Commission and the Public Safety Commission did not change its recommendation, if the board is, is inclined to, to, to take the Public Safety Commission's recommendation, I think that boiled down to they were still not comfortable with a left out of that Broadway driveway. And so if the board's desire is to stick with that and the Public Safety Commission, we can't then, we won't be able to satisfy that condition of our plan. So what I would ask, if, if that is the board's prerogative, I would ask for a short-term extension just so that we could amend, under the very specific condition, that we amend the plan to disallow lefts going out of the Broadway driveway and come back to you with that plan. And Solicitor Zader, I, I don't know sort of procedurally how that would work, but that's what we're here for tonight. So, you know, it's been a long road, we have tried everything. We've really tried with the township's help, with Dave's help, to, to get to PennDOT and have them accept some of the recommendations that the Public Safety Commission made that we thought were really good. They didn't accept, we showed this new evidence to Public Safety, it didn't change their mind. So we're sort of at the end of that, that road here. And so if we're asking for another extension from you all, it would be with the specific condition that the only reason you're granting the extension is that we come back with a plan that disallows the left out of Broadway and that we would do that. And I would hope that Solicitor Zader and Ed Murphy, our attorney, could work out sort of procedurally how that would work. But again, we have our professionals here, so if you'd like to see what we showed Public Safety, you can. I, we don't want to waste your time or theirs or anybody's if that's, or it's prerogative. So thanks.
Specifically, how many, what are you asking in time?
Well, so we would not need a long time at all. Like Mark could change the plan in a day. There are some other conditions in there, like recording, Mark has just reminded me, recording and other things like that, which certainly won't take a day. So we'd like, I think we need just enough time to satisfy those conditions. And I, I just don't know Solicitor Zader.
I would just note that certainly there'll be a new resolution required of this board because of the changes to the plan. The question I would ask and I defer to staff as to recommendation and ultimately the board's decision is whether or not you want this to go back to the planning commission or not. Legally, I don't think it's required, but it's prerogative of the board to make that decision.
Yeah, and our, our hope would be that we've sort of, we feel like we can satisfy all the other conditions of the plan as approved, so we would hope not to have to start the process over if in fact we're sort of on this one issue saying, hey, we hear everybody, we tried our best and it's just not going to happen.
Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. First of all, I like the fact that you are.
Trying to be realistic.
Well, coming, coming back and, you know, sticking with it, respecting the board's position, having given input, you know, from committee's head, you know, we rely on. My concern, so my, maybe I'll put it in the form of a question.
Sure.
Are you asking tonight that if you eliminate the left turn onto Broadway, that that's the end of it and you want commitment tonight from the board that we will accept whatever you bring to us in the next meeting? Is that the question?
With the very specific thing that what we would bring to you next meeting is very specific, it is the exact same plan, just with a restriction on a left turn out of the driveway, which we understand to be the Public Safety Commission's primary, if not only at this point, objection to the plan.
I, I feel personally, I feel uncomfortable basically placing a vote tonight for a plan that we haven't seen yet. I can certainly give, indicate intention, I feel comfortable, but I don't feel comfortable saying I'm committing to this tonight. For instance, left turn out of the proposed development.
Yes, sir.
Onto Broadway, that, that's an immediate concern for me.
Yes.
You're not proposing that people on Broadway can take a left into the same. You're just saying leaving the property or does it also include taking a left into it?
Yeah, so the only restriction that we're proposing, and I think the only restriction that the Public Safety Commission has objected to is the left out of Broadway. Yes, sir.
So you're leaving open the possibility that you could take a left into it?
Most certainly, yes.
That's already allowed under the approved plan.
Is it?
It is. Left in off of Broadway and right in off of Broadway are both allowed, I believe, unless Dave or Greg says otherwise. So to answer your question, Commissioner Osborne, I'll just jump in. I do not want the board voting tonight in the manner that you've suggested was a matter of concern. That would be for a resolution at a future meeting. So I think that really unless you want to effectively overrule the recommendation of the Public Safety Commission, which I suspect may not be the case, what they're really asking for is an extension of time in which to work things through with the township so it can come back for the board for a vote that does not rely on the waiver that cannot be satisfied.
That's exactly what I'm asking and however that can happen, yes.
And if I could just jump in real quick, I think probably erring on the, a longer term because we have to kind of iron out the procedure and the process, whether it has to go, because it's a plan amendment, so we have to kind of work through that process and figure out exactly what that is. So I would suggest a longer duration extension if the board so chooses so that we can work through the details of that process. For example, I, they'll have to go back to Public Safety Committee, I think is a prudent piece of that. And other reviews that may come up, engineering may need to look at it as well. So it's not going to be starting from scratch, but there will be plan amendments to it and it will have to go through at least part of the process, if not all the process. But we have to work through those details.
Thank you, and that's the reason why I just wanted to make sure, maybe in my own mind, that with possible changes, even with a new proposed plan, the reviews may indicate that there's still some tweaks need to be done.
Absolutely. I mean, what we could commit to is that we're not going to burden your boards or your professional staff with changes other than restricting the left turn or what they might also see in the, in the plans.
Okay. Thank you.
David, what would you think, just as an opinion on time?
We, we've been through a lot of these, so I'm erring on the conservative side, so I would say at least six months to get through the process. If we have to go through scheduling, planning, commission, that's kind of bare bones, I would think.
That was going to be my question, if there's a change to the plan, it might make sense to just go through planning and.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to look at it and how it comes out, like if we're going to put a pork chop in there and, you know, that all has to be worked out and I'm sure engineering will review and.
We'll have a Pidcock review as well for the board to review.
So that's why I'm thinking at a minimum of six months.
Yeah, I would think the first thing that staff would do once we receive the plan is make the determination of, is this a substantive change? If they're just proposing, you know, driveway striping, I would say probably not, but if they are proposing a pork chop, if, if we're looking at increased impervious surface, you know, stuff like that, staff would then recommend that they do go back to planning commission. So we'd really have to see the plan to make, you know, a serious determination as to what they're proposing.
So are you.
So are you good with six months?
That works for me. This board has been very patient with us, and again, I think all of it has been in good faith. We believe what we believe and that's fine, that's how these things go. So yeah, if, that's fine with us, if that's fine with you.
Any other board discussion?
No, I'm fine with that.
Fine.
Okay, any other input from the solicitor or engineer on this?
No further comment from me, thank you.
Anything, Tony, that you would...
No, I mean, I think that it's laid out, we'll obviously work with the developer's team and have our comments and go back and forth, come back with a plan that we hope that everyone likes, but, you know, that sounds fine for us, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll ask our township manager also if you've got any comment for the board.
This seems like a reasonable approach, provided it goes through the proper channels.
Excellent. Thank you. Before we go to a vote, is there any public comment on this agenda item? Nothing in the chat? Okay, so at this time, I need a motion...
He has to sign the paper.
Yes, please sign this.
You said I had to sign it, and I realized I left it in the car, so...
I'll give my homework.
You can sign this one.
I don't sign any of our stuff, because I, ownership signs it. So I can either run to the car real quick, which is literally around the corner, or I promise you, it is signed and in my car. You want me to go grab it real quick?
Please.
Okay, this is gonna take two seconds.
No problem at all.
After all of the extensions and delays I've asked you for here.
You can wait five more minutes.
You have 10 minutes. A seven-minute extension.
Six months and five minutes.
No problem. Thank you all for your patience. Okay. I'm confused right there. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, we'll just put a pause on that one. Up, there he is! He is sprinting!
I didn't realize there was a lot set at my expense.
Okay, so signature in hand, we're good, Greg. Okay, so at this time, I need a motion to proceed with a, to approve a resolution, amending Resolution 2020-18, which granted conditional preliminary final approval to a major subdivision plan entitled KRE Springview Commercial 2, extending conditional approval a further 180 days, which would be an expiration date of May 16, 2023. Do I hear a motion? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Okay, thanks, then we'll see you when we're ready.
Sounds good, thank you. Moving on to Resolution B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, appointing Township Manager Thomas R. Petrucci to serve as a delegate of South Whitehall Township on the Lehigh County Tax Collection Committee, TCC for the township, and I will ask our Township Manager to please assist with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So basically, this resolution is required as, due to the fact that the township doesn't have an official designated to be the delegate for the Lehigh Tax Collection Committee. So that is the agency that is created under the requirements of Pennsylvania Act 32 of 2008, which has the sole purpose of administering and collecting earned income tax from all employers and residents in the Tax Collection District for Lehigh. So basically, my task for this, if you choose to appoint me as a delegate, would be to represent the township's interests when voting on behalf of the township for matters before the TCC. For example, subject matter to come before the TCC would include voting on the tax officer, which is currently Burckheimer, and remediating collection disputes. So I'd seek a motion to appoint the Township Manager, myself, to be the delegate for the Lehigh County Tax Collection Committee.
Thank you, Tom. I just had a quick question, how often does this board meet where you would try to resolve issues?
They only meet twice a year, and coincidentally, that meeting, one of the meetings is tomorrow here at this township building at 8:30.
Look at that.
Yeah.
I mean, thank you. Any board discussion? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, I have a motion to approve, and I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item C, we have a resolution appointing blank to the South Whitehall Township Green Advisory Council. The board did hold interviews last couple of weeks for some candidates, and we've done them over the last several months as well. And at this time, I will open it to the floor of the commissioners if there's a candidate that someone would like to nominate to serve on the Green Advisory. I'll make a nomination, I'd like to nominate Derek Pinkham.
I'd second.
Any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a resolution appointing blank to the South Whitehall Township Public Safety Commission. I'll open the floor at this time to any nomination.
I'd like to nominate Chris Peichel.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion? Any from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank both of those candidates for their interest and willingness to serve the township, we appreciate. Moving on to Agenda Item E, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to authorize the transfer of unencumbered monies from one township account to another account within the 2022 approved South Whitehall Township general fund budget, and we will call on our Township Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So the approval is requested from the board for this budget transfer. It's basically a clerical issue, it's not a budgetary issue, but let me explain a little further. So the budget transfer would be in the amount of $63,000 from line item 0143010140117 to line item 0143000140117. So essentially, to give you the background on this, payroll is currently processing costs related to public works to the correct line item for seasonal staff, however, the budgeted item was going to an old account. So it's actually incorrect because it's a union account. So payroll has made the correction on their side to book the cost to the correct general ledger account, however, the budgeted amount is still put into the old and incorrect general ledger account. To date, we've had a little over $37,000 already expensed to line item 40117, and it's showing over budget because there's no budget amount there. So this is basically just correcting an issue dating back to the 2022 budget.
And it's a budget-neutral correction?
Correct, and it's not, it's not as though we're over budget because we're over expending, it's over budget because it just was not booked, well, was booked to the right line item, just not categorized in the budget for '22 correctly.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Any board discussion on this?
Commissioner Kelly. So this goes back to an error in preparing the 2022 budget.
Yes.
Do we know if this same issue was preceded 2022? Or is this...
I don't know, I thought you were gonna ask, is it corrected for 2023? And the answer is yes. But I don't know if it goes back to '21 or '20 or...
Okay, so on detail like this, although it's $67,000, would an internal audit have picked this up if it were existing prior to this year?
I'm gonna say if they dove into that particular, like during their test...
Right.
...procedure, if that particular issue was brought, was something they looked at, it should have. Yeah, I believe, because they would test payroll.
Yeah.
And I think it would have picked it up, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve said resolution?
Still moved.
I'll make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item F, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the township's acquisition of 0.025 acre portion of land owned by Norfolk Southern Railway Company, and authorizing and directing all necessary and appropriate action to accomplish this acquisition, including execution and delivery of documents in connection with closing and the payment of any required sums. And Tom Petrucci, if you'd help us with this.
Yes, thank you. So the resolution basically transfers 0.025 acres of land that's currently owned by Norfolk Southern Railway to the township. Now, I want to be clear that the township is not paying the costs of this, this would be passing through the developer, but, so this is in reference to the Crackers Port Road and Eck Road Warehouses approval, which was approved via Resolution Number 201929 and adopted on June 5, 2019. So one of the conditions specifically agreed to by the developer was to pursue with Norfolk Southern the provision of full frontage requirements along Eck Road across the Norfolk Southern Railroad crossing, including road widening and pedestrian connectivity. So it was not a requirement of plan recording, but the improvements were nevertheless a requirement for approval of the major plan. So there's about 50 linear feet of sidewalk improvements that are still to be completed, and the township must now acquire this portion of the property owned by Norfolk Southern to allow that to happen. So an appraisal was obtained by Norfolk Southern, and the township, again, would not be expending any funds in acquiring this, that those costs of the appraisal would be paid for by the developer. So basically, this resolution allows the acquisition of the property to go through, it's a requirement of the first-class township code that you approve this, and then basically that would allow the developer then to go forward with the remaining sidewalk improvements.
Very good, thank you, Tom. Any board discussion on this resolution? Any from the public? Public comment?
We have Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. Can you test your microphone?
Here I am.
Can we hear you? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Is the construction of the sidewalk that this will enable, is that project like ready to go? Is that shovel-ready? Has it been engineered, designed? Is it ready to go? Is this the last element that we're waiting on, or do they have to do all that yet? That's my first question.
Brian, this is Tony Talarida. It is designed and approved by Norfolk Southern, they signed all the agreements and put escrow money into their account for this. They actually are trying to schedule a pre-construction conference for Friday, so it's at 1 o'clock on Friday. So this would be, I would say, the last step before they can go to construction.
Okay, thank you, that's great news. And then as a follow-up, since the township is acquiring this parcel, who's gonna be responsible for removing the snow from the sidewalk? Is it gonna be the township? Is it Norfolk Southern? Is it the developers of the warehouse? That's my final question.
Yeah, Brian, that would be the township, because it's on our land.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing and seeing... Thank you, Brian. Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve, move for and approve said resolution?
Still moved.
We have a motion in a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item G, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township authorizing the execution of a traffic signal easement agreement with Ridgeview Corporate Park, LCC, providing for the granting of a perpetual easement to South Whitehall Township for the purposes of accessing, maintaining, and replacing traffic control devices, signage, and related equipment. Call on our Township Manager to please present.
Thank you. To give the Board of Commissioners the background information on this, so the highway occupancy permit for the Crackers Port Road and Eck Road Warehouses development required the installation of traffic improvements, including but not limited to a traffic signal timing loop to be installed for the project. During the construction of the timing loop, a portion of it was, for whatever reason, installed at the 1390 Ridgeview Drive location on private property. As a result, an easement is now required in order to allow the township to maintain the traffic signal timing loop. So I reviewed the need for the easement with Attorney Greg Feinberg, who represents Ridgeview Corporate Park, LLC. The traffic signal easement agreement was then prepared by Attorney Aldifer of Zader Law, and then it was subsequently determined to be acceptable by Attorney Feinberg following his review, he's already executed it. The traffic signal easement agreement is now ready to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, with the Township Manager executing on your behalf if you approve the resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion, is there a second? Motion in a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item H, we have a resolution approving sewer planning module related to the 309 Tillman Street interchange project at 4401 Broadway, and we have Mike Elias, our Public Works Utility and MS4 Coordinator, to present.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The 309 interchange project involves the widening and reconstruction of 309 from the 78 interchange to the 22 interchange. It includes structure replacements, as well as reconstructing portions of Broadway. The widening along 309 impacted the septic drain field for a property located at 4401 Broadway. In order to mitigate that impact, it was proposed that they abandon the existing septic system and connect the property to the existing sewer system on Broadway. As it states, the sewer line right now is just shy of that property, will need to be extended 150 feet to the east, and they are requesting one EDU or 223 gallons per day of sewer allocation.
Very good, thank you, Mike. Are there any board comments or questions?
Mike, what's the cost for the 150 feet? Do we know?
The cost is gonna go to PennDOT, isn't it?
Yes, this is all gonna be part of that cost share, since they need that line extended, there's gonna be significant amount that PennDOT is gonna have to pay for that. There's hardly gonna be anything to the township.
Yeah, they're taking her, they took her, how, one or septic area away.
Yeah, most of the project that is all gonna be done on Broadway is gonna be almost free for us, because they are moving our stuff out of our right-of-ways and making us move, so we shouldn't incur almost any costs from all the work done on Broadway.
Thanks, sir.
Excellent. Any other board discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to proceed with said resolution? I'll second, we have a motion in a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on to motions. Agenda Item A, we have Eck Road Outdoor Storage Zoning Hearing Board, November 30, 2022, and I'll ask our Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to please assist.
Oh, yeah, I will defer to Greg Adams.
So sorry, I'm trying to follow my agenda.
That's okay.
We will do a better job of updating the agenda.
No problem, keeps me on my toes.
This is related to a project that Planning Commission has already seen once. Triple Net Investments CI LLC submitted a sketch plan to develop the property at 1429 Eck Road, which is the northwest quadrant of the Eck Road and Norfolk Southern Railroad, over, literally across Eck Road from Crackers Port Road, DC warehouses. They're proposing a 79-trailer outdoor storage area with an eight-space parking area and a guard shack. Planning Commission viewed it on September 15. The Planning Commission made a number of comments, and there were two neighbors that also made a number of comments, particularly there is a residential dwelling immediately adjoining this to the north. So there were a number of comments regarding buffering, lighting, noise, and traffic. The outdoor storage is a special exception approval requirement, so they did submit a plan to the zoning hearing board for a special exception approval and some variances. plan to the zoning hearing board for a special exception approval and some variances. In the interim, they took the Planning Commission's comments, amended the plan, and then resubmitted a plan, both to Planning Commission and to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board is scheduled to see this plan on November 30. At this point, the Planning Commission is scheduled to see it in December. So we're taking these comments that were generated at the Planning Commission. With the revised plan, a number of items were addressed, but staff still feels that there are some significant items with regard to buffering, lighting, noise, et cetera. At this point, we have no tool to get these comments before the zoning hearing board, while they consider, you know, the special exception approval and any reasonable conditions that may be attached. So this request is of the board to either send staff, the alternate Township Solicitor, or both, to the zoning hearing board to present staff's list of comments specifically to the special exception approval. So that's what we're interested in doing. So that's before you, your choice?
Very good, Greg. Thank you. I know this is a new plan. Has our Township Engineer reviewed this plan at this point?
We are in the process of reviewing it. We'll have a letter out shortly, but it was submitted after the deadline for this Planning Commission. So that's why it was not on for this Planning Commission. We'll have a letter out shortly, though.
Very good. I would certainly believe it would be very advisable for Township staff and our alternate Solicitor and engineer to attend the zoning hearing board as interested parties and at least be able to present the comments and the outstanding items that planning had discussed. At the very least, that's one of my comments. Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Greg, would it be better for the zoning hearing board, let's say, in this case, to actually have the plan from the Planning Commission and be able to see it without trying to process what they have in their hands and comments that they may be hearing for the first time in the hearing? I guess I'm wondering, what is the urgency in reversing that? What is the urgency to going to the zoning hearing board before the Planning Commission has seen this and the Township Engineer?
Well, I believe the question is one of legality. At this point, they've already granted a waiver from the time limitation that the zoning hearing board can rule on the special exception approval, and they, that was given to November 30. So right now, that's the meeting that they must, you know, basically have a hearing.
That's what, are you saying that they have a legal right for the hearing to occur then?
At this point, I would agree more or less with that statement. They could certainly, we can ask them for another extension, but only they can grant that. So if they choose not to grant that, we are stuck with a November 30 hearing date.
I would understand it if that's the scenario. Does it make sense to ask them? Or, in your opinion, is it's half of one and six dozen of the other?
At this point, I think it's half of one, six, half dozen of the other. It's one of those things. The zoning hearing board is reviewing the same plan that staff reviewed, that the Township Engineer reviewed. The only ones who haven't reviewed the new plan yet is the Planning Commission. A lot of the comments, both by neighbors and Planning Commission, still apply. So we're under the impression that, since they would still apply, they should be brought before the zoning hearing board.
So, Tony, would you have a chance to review this and develop comments before this zoning hearing board meeting?
Yes, yes. We received it, I want to say, a week ago, or a week in a few days. So we're on pace to get the letter out, you know, this week to next week, somewhere in that timeframe. So we'll be ahead of where that packet will go to the zoning hearing board.
Okay.
And just to add and follow up on something that Greg said is, right now, we don't have anything in the process or in the ordinance that requires planning board review prior to special exception for non-residential projects. So hopefully, this is our last one, and we can get that ordinance updated so that in the future, special except, non-residential special exceptions will go to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission will write the report of the recommendations, conditions, and then that'll go to the zoning hearing board. So that's what we're hoping to do. This is kind of the first one that really got us thinking that we really need to do this.
That second one, yes.
Second one.
Second one's the charm. Just so you're aware, at a previous meeting, you did direct staff to send that to the Planning Commission. Tomorrow night, the Planning Commission will be reviewing the first draft of that ordinance amendment that will require Planning Commission review of non-residential zoning hearing board special exceptions.
Any other board discussion? Any from the public? Monica, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with having representation, absolutely, both staff and legal.
Okay, there's no other discussion at this time? Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I will make a motion to, oh, yeah, here, Tom, to.
A motion to direct staff to attend the.
Zoning Hearing Board on November 30.
Yep, and to send your alternate solicitor. Yeah.
And specifically our engineer as well, or?
I would word it, any experts the alternate solicitor may require.
Casey, did you get all that, or should I caution? So good. Okay, motion on the floors, I will make that motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Thank you for that discussion. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Correspondence and Information Items, Boards and Commissions' informational items, vacancies and upcoming meetings. I'll ask our Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review.
Thank you. Current vacancies are as follows: Civil Service Commission, one alternate vacancy; Landscape Shade Tree Commission, one vacancy; Environmental Advisory Council, three vacancies; and Zoning Hearing Board, three alternate vacancies. There are no longer any vacancies on the Green Advisory Council or the Public Safety Commission. Upcoming meetings, which are posted on Township website, are as follows: Thursday, November 17, at 6:00 PM is Crime Watch; Thursday, November 17, at 7:30 PM is Planning Commission; Monday, November 21, is Landscape Shade Tree Commission at 10:00 AM; Monday, November 21, at 6:00 PM is Green Advisory Council; and also on Monday, November 21, is a Special Board of Commissioners meeting to interview candidates for the vacancy on the Board of Commissioners at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, November 22, if needed, would be a Special Board of Commissioners meeting to interview candidates. Thursday, November 24, of course, is Thanksgiving, as well as November 25. The day after Thanksgiving, the offices are closed. And we have two zoning hearing boards, one for November 30 at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, and one on Thursday, December 1 at 7:00 PM. And then finally, I'm sorry, I skipped over Wednesday, November 30. There's a Special Board of Commissioners meeting to discuss and possibly appoint an individual to fill the Board of Commissioners vacancy. That's at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Tom. Awful lot of meetings coming up, and as you said, just to reiterate, all of our Township meetings are posted on the website. So always, please keep an eye on that for updated meetings. Moving on to old business, we have Agenda Item A, which is Wears Dam. I'll ask our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to please give us an update.
Good evening, Commissioners. We are making some progress down there at Wears Dam. We have run into some issues. We have figured out repair area number one that is being, going to be started tomorrow to get the rebar and everything we need to make that repair. Repair number two on the dam has been submitted to DEP for approval. We had to make some changes there due to some issues that were encountered with the sluth gate. So we are looking at a different option of a sluth gate. So we are just, everything's been filed to DEP. We're waiting for their response. We are going to still keep moving forward with repair number one, and hopefully, we'll have the answer from DEP, hopefully, tomorrow at some point, to know if they're accepting of the second option we were proposing.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb. Any discussion from the board? Anything from the public? Very good. Thank you for that update, Herb. Old Business Agenda Item B, we have our comprehensive plan update. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to give us an update.
Yes, so the comprehensive plan update, we're chugging along. We had our November workshop meeting, and there was a lot of discussion around land use, particularly the idea of a neighborhood corridor. So we've taken those comments, and we are currently incorporating and adding some language to the neighborhood residential, so that we hopefully can clarify the intent with that. And we will be presenting that and discussing that in more detail at the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow night. And then we also have the December, just at the date, I think it's December 13, Comprehensive Plan Workshop Meeting, where we're hoping to review, hoping to finalize the implementation items. So we're currently soliciting comment from the boards on the implementation items, and we will review changes more in-depth for the land use. Hopefully, we get through all of that, and there's a Planning Commission meeting the next night, and we can start looking at opening it for public comment from there.
Very good. Thank you for that update and for all the work you and the whole department has done. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Nothing? Any public comment? Okay, thank you. Moving on to direction and discussion, Agenda Item A, we have a review of copier, scanner, printer equipment and services, proposals received, and ask our Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to please direct us.
Thank you. So Donna Zuccarou had compiled the bid tabulation for the copier contract. So we are, the Township uses Co-Stars, but we also get and solicit proposals to ensure that we are utilizing, you know, the most cost-effective option to the Township. So this is to advise the Board of Commissioners that South White Hill Township will be entering into a contract with Fraser Advanced Information Systems for a copier lease. The copier will replace the Xerox copier currently in place, which is close to lease termination. The current machine has a CZ folder, which is no longer needed or used. With this feature not factored into a new lease, the price of the lease payment has decreased considerably. Township currently pays $719.96 a month. With the new lease, the Township will now pay $415 per month, per the Co-Stars contract. Township reviewed and received and reviewed seven proposals from copier suppliers and found Fraser's proposed copier to be comparable to the current machine and would serve the needs of the end user. Prices received range from $341 to $552 per month lease payment. That's just the base charge. So the Township, under this proposal, would be utilizing the lowest bidder.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Nice to see the lease payment go down, especially in the climate we're in. Everything seems to be rising, so thank you for bringing all these bids together and presenting this to the board.
Thank you to Donna, yeah.
And any other staff that worked on this? Thank you. Any board discussion? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you. Tom, what is the length of the lease?
It would be 36 months.
Oh, fairly short.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it looks like they were all 36 months. Is that pretty common?
Correct. Yeah, that was the parameters, I believe, established by the Township.
Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Hodges?
I just wanted to thank, is it Donna who put it together? Wow, really well organized. Everything is in a column up, just like the public can see it there. Just so well put together. Thank you.
And I actually believe Donna's listening in tonight, so she hears your praise, and I'm sure she appreciates that.
Great job. Thank you.
Yes, fantastic. Is there any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to proceed with the proposal for Fraser? Still moved.
Second.
Motion a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you all. Moving on to Agenda Item B, we have a recommendation by Township staff, Key Codes Inspection Agency and Barry Isid and Associates. I don't have a designation.
I can take it, yeah. So as the board will recall, you had reviewed or received presentations from both Barry Isid and Key Codes during your 11-2 and your 10-19 meetings. So they had reviewed their proposed increases, and it's important to note that any third-party fees are charged directly to applicants, and the charges, the Township also charges administrative fees, which are $50 per application and $50 for permanent issuance. So the Township staff has put forth a recommendation to continue the appointments for 2023 as they currently are. So Key Codes would serve as the primary non-residential inspector, and the alternate residential inspector, and Barry Isid would be the primary residential inspector and the alternate non-residential inspector. Should the board wish to explore alternatives in the future, it is recommended that the Township prepare an RFP for third-party inspection agencies in 2023 for 2024 appointment. This would give us ample opportunity to explore and compare alternative inspection agencies. We don't believe we have sufficient time to do so, to be now and the end of the year.
Thank you, Tom. Any more discussion on this matter?
Tom, I'm not sure when I read this. Are there any increases?
Yes. So Key Codes was approximately a 20% increase, and Barry Isid was, I believe, a little bit less than that, but both have increases, yes.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Any from the public? Commissioner Hodges?
I'm so sorry. I do have a question. At what point would the RFP go out, then? Would it be more in the middle of the year to give ample time?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the earlier, the better, because we also have, if we do change, it'll be a significant onboarding, because we have to get the new, if we do go with a new inspection agency, we have to get them up to speed on our system, so there's some training involved. So earlier we can get that process started, the better.
Do you want direction from us this evening, or is that something you would bring back?
No, we'll internally review that, but I think we would need to start compiling the RFP and drafting the document probably in the early first quarter of 2023, and then roll it out in the second quarter. That would be probably a good timeline to follow.
And I would be curious, when we get to that point, to know when the last time we did an RFP for these agencies.
I will endeavor to find that out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. If there's no other discussion, we can move on to Agenda Item C, which is water, sewer, refuse, zero balance billing remediation options. And our Director of Finance, Tricia Dickert, is going to assist us.
Good evening again, Commissioners. So I drafted a memo just to kind of walk us through what exactly the issues are. So if you'll just indulge me for a second, I'll read through the memo, I'll give some statements that sort of summarize the problem, and then we can go through possible solutions to the problem. So currently, when a resident or taxpayer pays an amount more than what was billed on their invoice, it produces a future bill that either shows there is a zero balance or there's a credit. If you look at the attachment, you'll be able to see what that looks like. I'm sure you've all seen it, but you'll be able to see what that looks like. So the goal tonight is going to be to discuss alternatives and also the pros and cons associated with maintaining the status quo or making any changes and what those changes could look like. While taxpayers occasionally overpay their water and sewer invoices, rolling credits forward, the bulk of this issue really is refuse. So I'll just ad lib the rest of this, because I've lived in this for the last few months, so I understand the problem. Where. Where refuse is concerned, it's billed on a quarterly basis. So what happens is they receive a bill for, property owners receive a bill for $95 each quarter. So it's $300 per year per unit. So just to simplify it, we'll talk about single one-unit properties because it's the end of the day and my brain doesn't want to do math anymore, okay? So it's $95 a quarter. If you are John Doe who owns a property, who knows that it's going to be $95 a quarter every quarter for four? Some people elect to pay that entire 380 with that first quarter bill. What that does then is that taxpayer or property owner ends up receiving a second quarter, a third quarter and a fourth quarter bill that lists no payment due with a zero balance. So I know we've had conversations throughout the budget process that postage is on the rise. You know, there are lots of reasons why we can consider if that process is still the best process for the township. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understands it's a lot easier to have a zero balance or a credit on refuse than it is for water or sewer. With water and sewer, there's consumption related. So you would actually have to pay more than your current bill and what your next bill would be for this to actually push into that category for water and sewer. So that's why I'm speaking really mainly towards refuse. There are approximately 2,050 bills for an estimated 500 properties that during the course of any year could receive this no payment due showing a zero balance that actually get mailed to taxpayers. I did some, I know I looked at this probably about three months ago before we entered budget season. So I trusted, I trusted the data that I reviewed through about July and then for the remainder of the year, I just used averages from the numbers that were represented from January through July. So we're pretty, we're pretty confident that this affects about 500 properties. Postage costs right now, it looks like the postage associated with those 500 or so properties is about $1,230, obviously plus whatever ancillary costs exist for the printing company to generate or to print that actual piece of paper and mail it out. So the ultimate question here is the posted, with postage rates on the rise, currently 60 cents. I believe that's going up fairly soon. Do we want to continue sending these? So I've laid out a few options on the second page of the memo. Option number one is turning off all zero balance bills. So before we talk about all three options, I think it's important for everybody to know it is one or the other. There, the system does not allow for us to do a hybrid, keep it turned on for the people that do want it, turn it off for the people that don't. The only thing that is selective is for the people that don't wish to continue receiving these zero balance bills, we can and should be promoting electronic billing for them. That would be obviously my suggestion if it's the board's desire to satisfy the people who find those notices unduly burdensome, okay? So the way I see it, I feel like there are three viable options. The first option is to turn all zero balance bills off. That would include bills that have a zero balance and bills that show a credit because again, I can't differentiate between the two, okay? The pros in my perspective with that is, you know, the obvious first one, which would be a cost savings of approximately 1,300. And then that does take into consideration what I'm guesstimating might be those ancillary costs for the 500 or so properties. And then obviously it's less mail for property owners who find those notices to be burdensome. The cons for option number one, if a property owner calls and requests a reprint of their no payment due bill, we are not going to be able to provide that. Once we turn that option off, the bill will never generate, so there won't be anything for us to reprint for them, okay? Expected complaints and concerns from property owners that rely on seeing that statement or invoice come across their mailbox that shows the amount that was paid and that we're still carrying either a zero balance or a credit. And then obviously the, I have a small con here and I say small now because it was just this morning that I received a number from our printing company. I reached out to them to find out what the costs associated would be, asking them to maybe include a mailer with the first quarter bill of 2023 so that we can notify property owners that they would no longer be receiving bills that show a zero balance or a credit. So they did respond to me this morning. Looks like it's fairly small. It's about $153 to include a mailing with the first quarter refuse bills. That's approximately 7,500 bills that go out, okay? So option number two is maintaining status quo and pushing paperless billing. Touched on that a little bit when I was discussing option one, but we'll just go through the pros and the cons. So the pros for option two is the property owners that do desire to get these can continue to receive them. Again, when I ran the numbers, it looked like approximately 2,050 people. It's sort of staggered. So maybe a person who received a first quarter bill for 95 just paid the 95. Maybe in the second quarter, they paid for the rest of the three quarters. So what we see is a gradual increase as we go through the quarters. The volume of people that have overpaid goes up. Likely at the end of the year, when you send out that third quarter bill, some people just don't want the fourth quarter one, so they'll pay two quarters with the third. So what I did notice was a trend that that number goes up probably by about 25 or 50 as we pass through each quarter. So of the 2,050 or so bills that go out, 500 are the ones that are seeing that zero balance bill. So I'm sorry, I'll get back on track. So property owners that desire to get them would continue to do so. The pros to maintaining status quo is we can continue to build the database for future electronic or paperless processes or services by getting those people who just don't want that paper anymore to sign up for electronic billing. I feel like at some point, it's 2022, at some point, the push is going to have to be a larger electronic presence. I think we all probably realize that. The third pro is satisfying the property owners who find these invoices burdensome by redirecting them to that electronic process. And then lastly, the continued transparency for residents desiring to see that prepayment or overpayment. As far as cons, you know, obviously we would then continue to pay the costs associated with mailing those bills. The final option is option three. This is something I've been thinking about since, you know, since I joined South Whitehall Township. It's, I think this one comes with a lot of, a lot of complexities, you know, but we could also consider billing refuse once a year. We could consider doing that bill for all four quarters in the beginning of the year, maybe setting a mid-year due date, okay? The pros to that is then you're eliminating three out of the four refuse mailings altogether. The annual cost savings just in postage would be approximately $11,640. Again, plus those ancillary costs for printing the notices. They charge you for the ink, they charge you for the paper, they charge you for the stuffing and the processing. I'm saying $11,640, which is basically $19,400 of the approximately 21-9 because we would still need to plan for maybe 2,500 or so at the end of the year that I think before it gets turned over to collection, it would behoove the township to at least send out one final notice, giving them an opportunity to pay it to us and then spare those third-party collection costs. The cons on this one, the costs associated with an insert mailer, again, I did just kind of get those prices and they're really not that significant. I think the biggest con though is property owners on a fixed income. You know, the question would become, perhaps it's easier for some to make that all-four-quarter payment in the first six months of the year, but some people really do need the entire year to, to pay the whole. So, you know, that, that is what I see in option three as the greater, the greater con, obviously. So with that said, these, you know, these are the options that I think we could explore. I don't necessarily think anybody's looking for a decision tonight, rather just opening up the subject. I know you have all received calls from your constituents. I totally understand that. I think we just need to make sure that whatever decision we're making isn't, you know, perhaps satisfying a percentage of them and then maybe opening us up for phone calls from the percentage of people that don't seem to find these notices problematic, okay?
Tricia, I have a question for you. At this point, I may have missed this. Do you have an approximate percentage of residents that do paperless billing right now?
I don't, I don't have that with me. I can probably find out how many people have signed up for it. I know the number is not nearly as large as we would like to see it. And again, you know, we've talked about things like NICSOL 360. You know, we've talked about the extra value of making sure we have all of this good information on our property owners. And I think we're, you know, we've got a team in place where we can finally start building that. At some point, I think we'll have to take a look at a larger paperless goal, you know, perhaps in some sort of five-year plan.
Tricia, I want to thank you for the work you did. I know we discussed this in the Finance Committee meeting a couple of times. One thing that just dawned on me and it was because I had a call at Tax Office today on something is looking at a tax bill, okay, obviously, and I'm referring now to refuge. What they've done is they sent out one, i.e. tax bill, refuge bill, and then they put a two in big letters and a three and a four. One bill and it's up to the, i.e. the payee, in this case, the homeowner or whoever's paying the refuge bill, to pay that second quarter. You've only done it, you've only mailed out once.
So like coupons?
It's like, yeah, yeah, it's actually what it is, but, but you know, you rip them off and you mail it in.
So the township did try that. They tried that a few years ago. Don't quote me on the year. Actually, I'm not even going to bother throwing out a year that I'm not sure is accurate. The South Whitehall Township did try that and I'm told what happened that year is it was four stubs exactly like you laid out, but because taxpayers were so used to receiving a stub every year, they didn't get paid in full. And that year, we sent an exceptionally large file to the third-party collector whereby those taxpayers were assessed significant fees on top of the bill on its face.
Well, that, that could, I understand what you're saying. I know in Bethlehem, when we had apartments, that even if you paid a tax bill early, okay, and again, I'm trying to relate it to refuge, we still got a letter in the mail saying, oh, by the way, you know, your tax bills do, or if you paid it, disregard it. As a reminder, but being that, you know, we could do this with 21,000 residents or the number you send out, is put something in the water bill or the sewer bill and reminding them about the refuge bill.
Yeah, I think that's really, I think that's difficult only because different water systems. Plus, keep in mind, some people that receive the water and sewer bills are perhaps tenants and that notice then would never go to the property owner who may then be responsible for paying the refuse. So, you know, in the interest of full disclosure, I can tell you there is an option for that I've been tossing around in my head for a while. I don't know if it would work, so I, I'm hesitant to go down the rabbit hole, but, you know, I come from, you know, another municipality where the refuse fee is actually situated on the real estate tax bill. There are so many great things to that, okay? Let's start by talking about collection percentage, except I don't know the collection percentage on refuse, so maybe it's not an issue. We know for the most part, real estate taxes, the percentage where I came from is slightly different. South Whitehall's percentage is higher, but the South Whitehall Township Real Estate Tax Compliance is about 98.6%. So if there was a way we could put that refuse charge on the real estate tax bill, you're essentially saying that's a guaranteed 98.6% compliance as well. Why? Because the bulk of that is coming from escrow companies for property owners that hold mortgages. There still are people that don't hold mortgages or don't hold that in escrow and opt to pay it themselves, but the lion's share of that really is coming from your mortgage companies. So, you know, that's a fourth. Maybe there's value into entertaining it, but I don't know all the nuances with tax collectors. Is it as easy as throwing a charge on the bill? I don't know the answer to that. Where I came from, we did all of that in-house. I billed the real estate tax in-house, but I don't know how it works when there's a tax collector involved, if you are or are not allowed to put a charge like that on the bill. It's the perfect place for it, you know, unlike water and sewer, there is, there's no ambiguity, right? This is a flat amount. We know what it is. It's based on units in a property, which is data that is already on the bill. I just don't know what we're allowed to ask the tax collector to do, which is why I hesitate to list it as an option for and why that's probably the, the most detailed explanation I can give.
I know you brought that up in Finance Meeting, that, that option. You're referring to Allen Towns specifically, which, you know, has done that.
Yes.
Tricia, I just want to thank you also. Great presentation, lots of great options. Looking forward to continuing listening to options that we have. Certainly, I think as always, education is important and if whichever option the township goes in that direction, I think it'd be very helpful to put an insert in the mailer in advance, letting people know, for example, if we chose the zero balance, turning them off, this is what this means. And also maybe even encourage in that first mailer, it's easier on all of us paper-wise and, and, you know, to pay at one time during the year if you're able to.
Yeah.
To encourage that and also to encourage being electronically and going paperless. So I encourage you to continue on this road. Thank you for all the work you've done to bring this to us.
Sure, sure.
Commissioner Osborne?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I never thought something so simple could be so complicated.
It really is. It really is.
When I look, so I'm going to weigh in because I think, first of all, thank you for all the work you did. I really wouldn't have realized, you know, the complexity of this. To me, it appears as though the savings to the township, if I process this correctly, is $1,230 for those no payment due notices, okay? So I'm one of the people who get these notices. I'm wondering, why am I getting this? This is a waste of money. What you're saying is though, it's $1,230. I wouldn't want to upset someone who wants to get these for whatever reason, and I respect whatever reasons, if, if you can't do a hybrid, so. But my, my personal opinion is I'm, whatever else anyone else would like to do, I'm fine with it is the way it is. The remedy for those who do want to get this is go to electronic billing. And I think it's that simple.
I would encourage you to contact the finance office and ask them to set you up for electronic billing. Throwing in a little plug.
Didn't I?
Obviously, I respect, you know, whatever, whatever the board decides. I just, I just am really wanting all of us as a group to be cautious that we're not maybe taking the complaints of 50 maybe taking the complaints of 50 if there are 450 that just see no problem with this. At the end of the day, you know, we, in finance, you know, we don't set these operational procedures, you know? We're not married to something simply because we've always done it, right? That's not the way that I operate. So I'm certainly happy to go down the path of change. I just really want to make sure that we're not doing anybody a disservice by making the change. You know, obviously, there are ways around it, right? There's outreach, there's communication, you know, there are certainly ways around it. I, I just want us to make sure we think about this carefully.
Tricia, is there any way to pull the public or get some kind of feedback from the public?
Yeah, I mean, we can. It's going to come at the cost of another mailer and another, and so we can definitely.
Or we can use like Survey Monkey and do a, do a survey.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, that an option would be maybe, hear me out, we're, we're too late for the current newsletter. Maybe it's, you know, a QR code that we put in the spring/summer version of the, yeah, the spring/summer version of the Township Newsletter. And, you know, maybe we gauge the resident property owner feedback throughout the course of 2023 to come up with a solid plan for 2024. I, I don't really know what the answer is. You know, that sounds great, but you know, what happens if the people who, you know, have skin in that game, part of those 500, they're not reading the Township Newsletter? So, you know, no matter, you're, you're never going to be able to reach everybody. You're also never going to be able to satisfy everybody. I just want to make sure, you know, we're, we're moving forward in, in the best possible way.
I do think the push for paperless is important.
I totally agree.
But yet, there's, there are people who aren't very savvy with that kind of stuff and they prefer to see it and hold the bill and have the paper in their, my mother is one of them.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Which is why that's a nice option because right now, it's not all or nothing, right? So, so, you know, maybe that's a, that's a newsletter push as well. If I'm not mistaken, we do put a QR code in the newsletter for people to sign up for paperless billing. But yeah, there, you're always going to have people, I'm not looking at you, Dave, you're always going to have people that just prefer that actual paper, right? And, and that's okay, you know, but, but the, sorry. But the beauty of this is it is one-off, right? So you can opt for electronic or you can simply do nothing, which keeps you on paper. But at least it's a means to get to where we know we probably should be at some point.
And thank you so much for putting this all together.
I'm sorry it's so complicated.
You know what, everything, I just have to say, the whole budget process this year was just, you did such a great job. We as Commissioners had an opportunity to ask questions and you answered them and it wasn't like five workshops where, you know, you just, it's such a great job. I can't even express it, how grateful I am to you. So I appreciate it.
I appreciate your feedback. And while I'm not really good at accepting comments, compliments, a wise woman once told me that I should just graciously say thank you. So, thank you.
I just have one more comment. Is it possible on the, when the statements go out, I know that we put a little note on the bottom that says, you know, the refuse, what quarter it's for. Are we able to add a line to encourage people to go paperless on every statement, just to keep it out in front of people?
It's already on there because I asked the staff today to defray the costs of mailers. Maybe we could just put that message on the bill. And the message that exists on the bill currently is promoting electronic billing. And despite that message being on the bill, we still receive phone calls, people asking us how to sign up for paperless billing, even though it's on the message, that's on the bill. It is on there is the short answer. Thank you. You're welcome.
If there's no other discussion, I believe we can move on. Yes, we good, everybody good? Okay, perfect. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, courtesy of the floors or anybody, member of the public who'd like to address the board on any non-agenda items. Anyone online? Dave? Anyone online? Okay, no? Moving on to Agenda Item 14, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments. I'll make that motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. We have no executive session this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this motion is adjourned. Thank you. Have a very happy Thanksgiving, everyone.